I would like to call the Cookville City Council Meeting for Thursday, February 2nd to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge.
Here.
Councilman Gilbert.
Here.
Five press.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Skip Ritter, Football Police Department chaplain, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty and everlasting God, we thank you that we live in this wonderful city here and have this wonderful community. Thank you for the men and women who serve on our city council. I ask that you would bless them with wisdom, help them to make godly and honoring decisions for the good of our city. Lord, I pray that the citizens of our community that are all, would all honor you in what they do, and we would pray for those who are in need. Now, would you please bring peace and order to the meeting? And I pray that your will will be done as it is in heaven. I pray this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
Vote your opinion.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gilbert and seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on January 19th, 2023. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, consider on second and final reading, ordinance O 230101, presenting of one parcel located at 2730 Buck Mountain Road, tax map 052 parcel 013.00 from RS 20, single-family residential to RS 10, single-family residential. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. There have been no changes to the ordinance. We've had no calls or comments. I recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 0230102, presenting of one parcel located at 1068 East Tenth Street, tax map 040L, Group K, parcel 013.01 from CN Neighborhood to CL Local Commercial. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, there have been no changes to the ordinance. We've had no calls or comments. I recommend approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We have nothing on the consent agenda, so moving on to seven A, new business, consider approval of ESRI GIS Enterprise License Agreement for all city departments. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Cookville utilizes ESRI geographic information system software for making the maps that we display to you guys and management of many of city services. The current three-year enterprise license agreement with the ESRI expires this June. The agreement provides our GIS users access to ESRI licensed software and maintenance of the software for the term of the agreement. Yes, our ESRI has provided a new three-year agreement which reflects an increase in price. Previously, the price was $105,000 or $35,000 a year. The increase in price, the software cost is $39,700 annually. This is split by the Cookville Electric, Cookville Gas, and the Water Quality Control Department and the General Department. The total cost for the three-year agreement is $119,100. And I respectfully request your approval of the enterprise license agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji and seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Seven B, consider approval of cybersecurity insurance policy renewal. Mr. Porter.
Mayor and Council, this item is to request your approval to renew our cybersecurity insurance policy for the next year. This is a standalone insurance policy that covers our costs in the event of a ransomware attack and that of breach, computer fraud, things of that nature. Our insurance broker, McGriff Insurance, solicited quotes from four different insurance companies. The policy that they recommend is from Travelers Insurance, and it was the exact same policy that we had last year. It's just a renewal of that. It is a million-dollar policy with a $100,000 deductible. The premium this year is $40,985, which represents a 5.14% increase over last year's premium of $38,980. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider awarding bid for one CAT 420 backhoe loader utilizing the statewide contract number 225, contract ID 72878. Ms. Greenwood.
Yes, the gas department is requesting to utilize statewide contract 225 highway and heavy equipment for vendor Thompson Machinery for a Caterpillar 420 backhoe at a cost of $128,931.26. This backhoe will replace the 2005 John Deere backhoe that has had a host of mechanical issues in the last few months. This is not a budgeted item and will require a budget amendment. However, the utility has adequate cash reserves to accommodate this purchase. And they are expected to have a 5% pricing increase before next fiscal year. I would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Baji and seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider awarding bid for one dual tandem equipment trailer utilizing the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Contract 092922. FTS, Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this is a dual tandem tilt trailer. It's a budgeted item. This is through the Sourcewell contract. The company is selling trailers, and the bid is $28,605.05, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge and seconded by Councilman Walker. Any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven E, consider approval of contract with T-DOT for improvements to Pippin Road and authorize a payment of matching funds. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In August 2022, T-DOT completed a road safety audit for Pippin Road, beginning at West Broad Street, running north to County Farm Road. This is an audit resulted in this improvement project, which includes milling, resurfacing existing asphalt through the entire project, installation of a high-friction surface treatment around the Pippin Road Vivian Drive intersection in the county, new stripings, snow plowables, and new signage. Approximately 1,500 linear feet is inside city limits. T-DOT is requesting the city enter into a contract to cover 10% of the construction cost for the city's portion, for the city's portion of the project, which is the portions inside city limits. The estimated cost for this portion is $44,000. T-DOT is requesting a construction deposit of $4,400 to cover our 10% portion. This project set the bid spring of 2024 and may be completed by fall of 2024. I respectfully request allowing the mayor enter into this contract and cover our 10% portion of this construction cost.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion?
That's a good deal.
Absolutely. Our cost right now, if we were to do it in-house with our construction crews, would be $40,000. So yeah, 10% to get this $1,500 is the deal. Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, that concludes the agenda portion of our meeting. We will open the floor now for citizens who would like to speak before city council. Are there any? Okay. I will ask that you come up, please state your name. If you live in the city or county, you'll be limited to three minutes. We will hear concerns, but I want to remind everybody that this is concerned and comments only. There will not be any discussion from the council. There won't be any questions that we'll be able to answer. If you want to come talk to us afterwards, we're more than happy to do that, but at this moment, we'll just be taking comments.
Okay. Start. My name is Luanne Nicosia. I live in the city of Cookville. We've been here for five years, and we love it. I want to begin tonight by stating for the record that on Sunday, January 22nd, we as Christians were observing from the outside a drag show event that claimed to be 18-plus. We wanted to make sure it stayed 18-plus event and that no children were allowed in. But most importantly, I want to also make extremely clear for the record that as Christians, we fully condemn the hate groups, the Nazis, the Proud Boys, the Antifa, and all other hate groups that were present that day. We condemn their words, we condemn their actions, and their evil Nazi flag. We condemn it all. We were only there and stayed there to protect and monitor, to make sure that no children were allowed into this drag show, also to pray and to make sure that this was done peacefully and legally. We arrived that Sunday at approximately 10:00 AM before it started. There were just a couple of us there. We prayed, and to our surprise, we looked across the street at Hicks Brewery, surrounded at that time with nine to 10 Antifa that were dressed in black with masks. Several of them had vests on that said Antifa, and we have pictures to prove that. They even had one on the roof. So about 30 to 40 minutes later, we were shocked to see the other hate groups arrive. The Nazis, the Proud Boys, others, they started yelling back and forth. I moved down from all of them and stood with a small group of Christians gathering near the opposite end of the building. Once again, I want to repeat, our purpose for being there was to just monitor, protect, and pray legally and peacefully. Hicks wants us to believe that since they had a small 18-plus sign posted, that they intended to keep it adults only, but we had heard otherwise. In fact, it was posted online, January 2nd, as a PG event, and no mention of 18-plus at that time. It was only mentioned later in January. So that, in addition to a drag show that was held in Cookville over at TTU that made national headlines with, you know, a child and handing money to them, et cetera, it was just inappropriate. So we wanted to make sure that it stayed in 18-plus. Just a suggestion for event coordinators of these drag shows, you may in the future not want to hire a hate group such as Antifa to guard your shows. This can invite, and they did have vests that said Antifa on them, this can invite and encourage other hate groups to our city, and Cookville does not need any more groups like that ever coming here again. I love the city, and I want to keep it safe for our families. So I want to end with this, a quote I think that sums up our mission. As Ronald Reagan said, "Trust and verify." We were there to present, to only verify, monitor, protect, and pray peacefully and legally. Our children and their innocence is worth it.
I will ask, I will go ahead and ask if we can just be respectful of each other, please. Let people talk. If y'all want to have discussion afterwards, I welcome that, but if we will, just try to keep the meeting in order, please. Go ahead.
Joan Nicosia, residing in Cookville here. As resident in Cookville, I have many concerns about our current events that are happening in our town. As you know, there were some unwanted radical groups at the protest against Hicks Brewery who sponsored this Drag Queen event on Sunday, the 22nd. My wife and I were the very first ones there at 10:00 AM, practicing our First Amendment rights, freedom of speech, legally and peacefully. We were there the entire four hours of the protest, and we know exactly what happened, despite what the news and the media has posted. There were actually eight different groups there later that day, and many of them were not even from this area. We took many pictures and videos and know the truth of what actually happened that day. I have also spoken with many city officials from City Hall, the Sheriff's Office, and Cookville PD explaining to them what really happened. But the news media has been very biased and has defamed our names and character to make it look like we were standing with these radical groups, when in reality, we were not in any way, shape, or form. And unfortunately, we've had religious groups here in Cookville that have actually shunned us because they do not know the facts of what really happened that day. All right, when I stood up against the evil and the wickedness and the perversion that the drag queens, LGBT, and upper Cumberland Pride brought to Cookville that day. People can think what they want, but I know that we stood up for this town against the debauchery and the demoralization, and most protected children from this evil agenda. We even stood and prayed in a circle with the church and their pastor and actually traveled. They traveled an hour and a half to come stand with us against the wickedness and make sure no children were being sexualized. And did that make the papers or the news? No, it did not. I thank the church members for joining us, but I'm sad to say that I was actually embarrassed when the pastor asked me, "Where were your churches? Where's your pastors? Why aren't they out here?" All I could say was, "I don't know. I don't know where they're at." What is it going to take to get the residents and the pastors and the churches to come out in the streets with us, to stand up and fight against this evil? All you need to do is come out and stand with us. Make no mistake, there's a cancer right now in our community and is being brought in by the upper Cumberland Pride group, by who in the ways they sponsor these events. My wife and I have seen this happen beforehand, firsthand from where we came from. We actually moved away from this garbage because it grew so big that it was beyond repair, and it was just accepted by the public. Is this what Cookville wants for their city? Because if you don't do anything about it, that's exactly what's going to happen to Cookville. It will become infiltrated with this evil and this perversion. In conclusion, it's time for the Christians to get out and practice our God-given First Amendment rights, our freedom of speech, and do it protest legally and peacefully against these drag queen events and keep the children from being exposed to perversion. Don't let evil intimidate you. This fight has only just begun, and if we turn a blind eye, it's only going to get worse. I yield back.
I will now say that any comments that are going to be derogatory or talking down to anyone or disrespectful, I will ask you to stop speaking. Again, we are going to be respectful of each other, and we're going to let people talk, but we're not going to be like that. Okay? Go ahead. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Blair Dudley. I live in Cookville. I do want to say that I appreciate the comments of the speaker that said that the Christians condemned the Nazis and the hate groups. I'm speaking in favor of individual liberty. Tonight, there's a time for when advocacy for or in opposition to a thing can and often does become an attack on the natural rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. When we ask governments to enact laws to enforce our moralities on others, then we engage in a, we're engaging in a political aggression against other individuals. When we align with others who may or may not align with our values in an attempt to subjugate individuals in a particular religious, ethnic, or social group, then we can easily slip into persecution. And I believe this has happened. A group of people representing Nazis and fascists with the swastika gathered to persecute citizens of our community. And it's my view that we invited them to do so. Silence by our community is unacceptable, and it emboldens these hate groups in persecuting our neighbors. Christ said, "A new commandment I give you: Love one another. As I've loved you, you must love one another." I ask that all the citizens of our community unite in love to condemn the persecution of our neighbors. Silence is complicity, and I believe we can all agree that Nazis are not welcome here.
Good evening. My name is Cassie Thomas, and I've lived in Cookville for the better part of 17 years, so that is half of my life. And I've lived other places. Like many graduates of small-town colleges, I dreamt of getting out to experience new, bigger, and better things. But I can tell you, from my time in Nashville, Chattanooga, and even New York City, I didn't find what I was looking for. I yearned to come back to Cookville and be a part of this community again. I work in public service. I pay taxes. I shop locally. Got a squeaky-clean record, except for a couple speeding tickets. I can volunteer and contribute to local nonprofits. I intentionally spend my time, energy, and money supporting this community, my community. But last week on Cedar Street, there were masked men from radical hate groups telling me and everyone like me in no uncertain terms that we don't belong here. Men from the same domestic terrorist groups who tried and failed to undermine democracy two years ago. We're here, trying to undermine my civil rights, threatening my neighbors and my friends. Now, don't get it twisted. I am not trying to hold you all accountable for the actions of a few out-of-town fascists. That wouldn't be fair. But I moved back to Cookville in part because I wanted to foster a safe and welcoming space for all of the current and future students who come here for their higher education. And I'm happy to take that on, but it would be nice to have some support. It would be dandy to have some elected officials who valued the contributions of their LGBTQ and Jewish constituents, ethnic minorities, and all people of color in this town, enough to expend the modicum of effort it would take to disavow white supremacist groups slinging intimidation, slander, and slurs at innocent civilians in our streets. Frankly, the only people I want to feel unwelcome in Cookville are those who seek to harm and suppress peaceful and productive residents such as myself and many of you here today. I believe Mr. McKinney said at the last meeting that he was here to represent approximately 10,000 citizens of Cookville. I'd like to think that means that there are also about 25,000 Cookvillians who know that I am not an evil predator or a cancer. 25,000 citizens who recognize that tragically misled and demonizing rhetoric does not deny my continued service to this town. Or at the very least, 25,000 citizens who have the civic wherewithal to know that regardless of your race, gender, religious affiliation, or sexual identity, you have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in this town. If you're concerned, if you're here tonight and your concern is safety, I need you to know that you're making a lot of people in this town feel very unsafe.
Thank you.
My name is David Klein. I'm a Putnam County resident, and I am a Jew. Actually, 100% Eastern European DNA fact-check Jew. I work, play, and I spend my money in Cookville. On January 22nd, white Christian nationalists, or how they should be referred to, domestic terrorists, converged on our streets. Actual Nazis proudly displayed their swastika flag while trying to intimidate local residents at a 18-plus drag show at Hicks Brewery, a local tax-paying business. There were other deplorables in attendance, too. We welcome Proud Boys, Three Percenters, Patriot Front, and probably others. Was it the intention of Cookville to welcome them with open arms? What were these domestic terrorists met with? Silence from county and city officials, silence from county and city police departments, and the deafening silence up until this evening from the religious leaders in this community, some of whom were standing within close proximity of these domestic terrorists. As a Jew living in a deeply conservative state, I knew life would be a little bit different from the culturally diverse area I grew up in in South Florida. My family wanted to be closer to nature, slow life down, and learn to live off the land. We would assimilate to our new area and culture while still maintaining our views and our beliefs, or so we hoped. We've personally had many encounters with ignorance and intolerance here, starting from an owner of a local HVAC company asking me if I wanted to bring my Jew magic to his congregation, or to when my son, who's currently at TTU, was on the high school soccer team and constantly dealing with Jew jokes, most of which came from the son of a Cookville police officer. Most recently, we had to get involved with the school administration because my daughter was being harassed by several students. Things like, "Hey, Jew!" were being shouted at her, or she was told she isn't a real American because she's a Jew. Tennessee and the upper Cumberland has a domestic terrorist issue that requires the most immediate attention. Instead, we have an unwarranted attacks by the Republican-led state legislature on women's rights and LGBTQIA community? I know things are bad, but seeing Nazis in our town actually made me angry. Not hearing or seeing any condemnation of the hate, intolerance, and intimidation our city experienced from county and city leaders is heartbreaking. To add insult, January 27th is Holocaust Remembrance Day. Did any official make any mention about that day, days after a Nazi flag was flying around town? More silence, which is why I'm here. As an underrepresented, as an underrepresented member of our community, I stand firmly and in solidarity with our LGBTQIA+ African-American, Latino, and Native American brothers and sisters. We must denounce all hatred and intolerance.
You have to go ahead and wrap it up. Your time's up. If you would go ahead and wrap up, please.
Finish up?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
If that means standing up for those without a voice, that means changing racist mascots, even if it means posting on billboards that Putnam County loves and accepts all people regardless of race, religion, sexual identity, or orientation, do it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask you to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dominique Tivell, and I'm a Putnam County resident. I don't expect everyone to understand or agree with each other, but we should be civilized and mature enough to respect each other by letting people live their lives and pursue what makes them happy while posing no tangible threat to others. And if you're someone who believes that drag queens are a threat to children, I implore you to truly look at statistics and patterns, and you will find the margin for child sexual abuse and exploitation overwhelmingly lays within the child's family circle and church system. And if you don't want your children exposed to drag queens, then it is your right to not allow them to go to a drag show. Just as parents who don't want their children exposed to the hypersexualization of children that abounds at child pageants, they don't take their kids there. I get it. The world is a scary place, and we're all afraid for our own reasons, and we all have something to protect. But we are treading on a very slippery slope by entering this territory, for which history has plenty of examples, especially Nazi Germany. Since the time of our founding fathers and forward, we have tried to put safeguards in place to ensure the best future. In our constitution, it states, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." We have the separation of church and state for a reason. And while religion can be a wonderful moral compass for guidance, we must examine our true motives within our actions. And while it is their right, seeing a church group shake hands with Nazis and chant hateful rhetorics such as "Jews rape kids" and "Gays rape kids" is disturbing on a level that I cannot express. Despite what they may tell themselves, it is not done within the righteousness and worship of God, but of self-worship and self-imposed righteousness that makes them seek to remove the rights of others. Lastly, I would like you to consider, while we may frequently see church groups protesting drag events, have you ever seen a drag queen protesting outside a church? And what would happen? How would members of the church feel if one day the pendulum swung and it was your beliefs, your lives, that were being targeted? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Evening, council members. My name is Quentin.
Thank you.
My name is Quentin Thomas, and I've lived in Cookville all good, all but about a year and a half of my 25 years. And I'm here today to talk- And I'm here today to talk about the morning of January 22nd. As the citizens that attended the last council meeting said, and some of the people today, there was a drag show on that day. And on that day, I drove by to see what it looked like against the wishes of some of my close friends. Into my horror, I saw that there was a Nazi flag being flown by one of the protesters. I approached the protests and I heard many hateful and untrue statements, mainly that those of the drag show and those in the gay community as a whole reproduce through abuse. This notion is an extremely dangerous one, and this lie has been spread for many years and is an excuse to mistreat the gay community as a whole. Gay people do not reproduce through abuse. They do not try to convert people to their lifestyle. They simply want to be treated as humans. Gay people are more likely to be the victim of sexual assault rather than to be the one initiating it. Gay people are also more likely to be the victim of a violent crime as well, simply for existing. In 1969, the Stonewall riots occurred. A gay bar was stormed with many of the patrons inside being beaten and arrested. At that time, being gay was illegal and it was considered a mental illness. In 2016, a gay nightclub had an active shooter incident. Forty-nine people were killed and 53 were wounded. At that time, it was legal to be gay as well as for gay people to get married. Yet more people died that day than in the entire week of riots that occurred at Stonewall. These incidents were almost 50 years apart. The idea that gay people commit lewd and inappropriate acts is shared by many modern-day Christians as well as Nazis during World War II, as well as the Nazis that exist today. And I do not think that they are welcome in our community. Any idea that anti-gay legislation needs to be introduced is harmful and can only lead to history repeating itself again. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grayson Cupid. I live here in Cookeville. Council members, I stand before you this evening to humbly request that you reflect on recent events here in our city. As you know, on the afternoon of Sunday, January 22nd, Cookeville's Westside District became a protest site where no fewer than four individual hate groups stood alongside members of our community to protest the private event being held at Hicks Farm Brewery. For a moment, I would like everyone to examine things for what they literally are and not for what they seem to be. One side arrived with wigs and makeup and music. The other side arrived with Nazi flags and messages of hate. And I feel like I need to emphasize here that I'm not speaking hyperbolically. We hate you. Your community hates you. These are some of the cries the citizens of Cookeville endured from those protesters. And when I say Nazi, I'm not making generalizations. We all saw the photos. Mayor Wheaton, in a statement after that day's event, you stated that, quote, "The original message was lost." And I would encourage each one of you to reflect on what precisely the original message was. In the January 19th meeting of this council, many citizens spoke to voice their concerns with the then-upcoming event, including a Mr. Kurt Settles. In his address, Mr. Settles quoted scriptures and asked this council to, quote, "Use the sword to execute wrath." And one would have to be willfully ignorant to interpret that as anything other than an implicit call for violence. And how did this council respond to Mr. Settles and others that spoke that day? "We hear you. We're trying. We're doing everything we can. We wish we had a magic wand." The same groups that showed up that day doubtless watched the proceedings of this body. Their spokesperson specifically called out Putnam County leadership over that megaphone on the day of that protest. Now, it would be easy and politically expedient for council to wash their hands of this, but I would once again ask the council to reflect on the message that they are sending when they respond in the way that they did that day. Hate has no place in this community, and yet it is too easy to imagine someone with a hateful heart watching those proceedings of this body on January 19th and feeling that they would be welcome here, that they would be needed here. In fact, I have with me the front page of the National Justice Party's website, one of the hate groups that showed up that day, where our city is still the number-one headline being touted, and a full article celebrating the events. We all know that our city is growing, and as it does, it will continue to provide opportunity for individuals, for local businesses. With that opportunity, though, with that growth, there will naturally always be a greater diversity of beliefs, of cultures, of faiths, and of lifestyles. Cookeville is a beautiful city, and I think it has enough opportunity for all of those groups. And I'm proud to call this city home, but I am not proud of this council today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leve Stanger, and I live in Cookeville, and I've lived here for 23 years now. And last council meeting, there was a call to have the city council to ban the drag brunches, and they were made to be an over-18 event. And as someone who has been to several of these drag brunches and taken my under-18 niece, the only thing that we ever experienced, and my niece, who is very shy, have ever experienced is love and kindness and support. And the drag queens telling her she was beautiful and perfect and to follow her dreams. And discussing her STEM camp she was about to go to with her. It has been nothing but love. And to say that it is evil and try to take that away really feels counterproductive and against how I feel this city has always been about being open and loving. And I just wanted to share what my experience and that of my under-18 niece. I mean, she was highly disappointed when she was not able to come to the last one because it had been turned over 18. And I do understand that in some manner, but there was nobody trying to turn anybody anyway. It was just a show of love and fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Cherry Butler. I have spent the majority of my life as an early childhood teacher and a mom. And what you, lady said about a lot of children are sexually abused by a family friend or someone. I have known children and have been through that. My concern with the young children being at these drag shows is you're affecting their development. They don't understand what's going on. And you're hardening them, so now they're more likely to become victims because they've seen what's going on, and they think this is okay. This is just what everybody does. They don't have the mental capacity to understand that this is not, this is different than someone touching them inappropriately. And that's what scares me. I mean, look at, I can remember years ago when they first came out with all of these video games. Child psychologists came out and said, "You're going to harden these children's minds against violence." And I'm seeing it happen now. But everybody says, "Oh, no, no, it'll be okay. It'll be okay." But it's not. Children's brains are not able to understand right from wrong. They learn it as they mature. So if they're constantly being put in situations they don't understand, you're doing them harm. You're not allowing them to be a child. It's in most of the, I was there. I disagreed with what went on with the hate. We tried to get as far away from that. I didn't enjoy it. You have no, hate's not going to solve anything. I'm a kid of the 60s. I was a flower child. We all should love each other and get along. But putting their, putting children in a situation that mentally they cannot handle, that is my concern. I don't care what adults do. But I do, when you're showing children something, I've watched videos of kids horrified by what's going on in these drag shows. So don't tell me that they're enjoying this. That's what we're trying to stop. We're not trying to stop drag shows or how you choose to live your life. We're trying to stop harm to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Blake Marlowe. I'm a Cookeville citizen. I've lived here for the better part of 14 years. I've worked with disadvantaged youth here. I pay my taxes. And as a taxpayer, I feel like I have a right to express my uttermost disappointment in our city council. We had actual Nazis in Cookeville, and nobody has said a thing. My friends, my neighbors, consenting adults are going to these events, and these terrorists are coming in and threatening them. I shouldn't have to tell my partner how to use a gun or take one to work because they took her picture and said they were going to find out where she worked and dox her information. I shouldn't have to have a 12-gauge next to my bed because I'm afraid the Nazis are going to find where we are and break into our house. They vandalize businesses, and they've threatened Cookeville citizens. These are people that have been bussed in from out of town and threatening Cookeville citizens, and no one said a thing. I'm so disappointed in all of you. Let this be a lesson to my peers and everyone here, the empower, the importance of voting, so that we can get some people that actually represent our values here in Cookeville and in Putnam County. Because not everybody thinks like you. Not everybody acts like you. Not everybody believes the same things that you do. And guess what? Progress will always march on. And we're going to look back at history, and we're going to look at people like y'all, and we're going to say, wow, what a shame. That's what our kids, our grandkids, and their kids are going to read in history books. They're going to see stuff like this and say, "I cannot believe that they just let these people do this. How awful." I'm so disappointed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve, and I was there that day. My wife called me on her way home from church and said, "You won't believe, I was driving by Ralph's, and there was this, these two groups yelling across the street at each other." And I thought, not in Cookeville. Not in Cookeville. It's an awesome place to raise a family. I think we all agree to that. It's a great place to live. I got to go to college here. And we're in tough times. I think it's obvious. People are on different sides of some issues. But I want to say that I'm grateful. I'm grateful we live in a democratic society where each one of us can come express our views. I'm grateful for a city council that I believe listens. But you guys, if you don't know, they're in a tough spot. There are state laws, there are city laws. And trying to talk to my pastoral friends and the challenges that, for those of us that, honestly, I don't want drag shows in my town. I mean, I'm not going to lie to you. I would disagree with you on that element. But I don't want swastikas or hate groups in our town. And I went there that day to pray. I went there that day to ask God for peace in our city. And I believe we can all do this. I believe we can all seek the peace of our city. And we can all pray, and we can ask that God would bring peace and true love. We're not all going to agree on anything. My wife and I don't agree on everything. Does anybody have a spouse that they agree on everything? I don't. But we love each other, and we can discuss our issues together. And we can seek to find a place, a place where each one is respected and loved. And we don't have to, I mean, I waited to the Proud Boys left before I got anywhere near the front of Ralph's Donuts, and somebody snapped a picture of me in front of Ralph's Donuts. They cropped it and put it between the guy with the swastika and the Proud Boys. And I had friends calling me going, "Were you with the Proud Boys? I've coached your kids in soccer for 20 years. I don't care what color you are. I don't care what your background is. I will stop and help change your tire on the side of the road." And I believe you'll do the same for me. That's the kind of town we have in Cookeville. I want to challenge us to please. Let's pause. Let's seek what's best. Let's seek to follow the law of the land. Let's seek to honor those that are serving. And yes, if you don't like what they're doing, we can vote them out next time, right? That's our right, and being here is our right. But as we go on the streets, I implore you the same thing I tell people that I'm friends with. Don't walk around with signs and say hateful things. That's not helping anybody. That's not building friendship. But let's walk around and seek to really be there for one another.
Thank you.
My name is Billy George. I've lived in Cookeville my entire life. I come to you as a citizen, not affiliated with any organization, but as a citizen of Cookeville, also as a queer member of this community. One that had to go to graduate school in a completely different state and came out at the age of 30 because of the pressures of church. I had to leave here because of the pressures of my community of not feeling as if I was welcome to be my true self. I went to school and graduated with one of you. I spoke with a couple of you this week, and I appreciate that. I thank you for those of you who've read letters. Whether you've responded or not, that's on you. Personally, I do think that the silence is an invitation for a return of that particular type of event with the Nazis being present. For those of certain ages, you might have watched the movie Birdcage. Maybe you've seen some shows like Medea. Or better yet, my generation loves Mrs. Doubtfire. Guess what? It's all drag. You say you want to protect the children, but yet you justify the ability to take them to a rated-R movie. Individuals state that when the Nazis showed up, they moved to the other end of the street. There are images, literally, of you fist bumping those individuals. As a citizen of Cookeville, silence is difficult to watch. There are so many issues and concerns that people of this area have. With more and more businesses coming into Cookeville or to our region, DEI components or diversity, equity, and inclusionary components are part of the mission and what they look for. If you look across this room, predominantly, we are Caucasian. Every one of you up there is Caucasian. Ethnicity, heritage, I don't know. I have 5% Jewish heritage. I'm also queer. If I was in Germany, Poland, anything during World War II, I as well would be in a concentration camp that gave us a upside-down pink triangle. And you know what's terrifying? Is that 63% of millennials and Gen Z'ers do not know that there were 6 million Jews in the Holocaust. As someone stated previously, Holocaust Remembrance Day was on the 27th of January. It's disappointing that we can't have a statement that even says hate is not welcome. Again, I appreciate those of you who've met with me. I appreciate those of you who've made time to meet with other individuals and organizations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council and audience. My name is Carol Fleetwood. I do live in this county. For those of you who are not aware, the white supremacist Nazi Proud Boys, Three Percenters did not go to Ralph's at first. They went to West End. They went to West End Park, which is a predominantly black neighborhood in this city. They unfurled their flag, they marched around and they showed their muscle. And a church in that community on that Sunday went on lockdown. They were afraid to go out to their cars. These people who hate do not only hate drag queens. They hate Jews. They hate blacks. And they'll come after you if you're not white and Protestant and you don't look and act the way they want you to. Okay, once again, white supremacist hate groups in Putnam County have tried to instill fear in our city. Fear and intimidation in this very city council, and I won't name who it is, who are led by the people. We voted for these people. I will not cower. I will not be afraid. I will not back down. I will not be silenced. There are many people in Cookeville who feel the way I do and they're not here right now. They are working. They have other meetings to attend to. We are more numerous than those people out there. There is no room for hate in this room, in this city, in this county. We will not be deterred. We will not give up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cyril Fote. I'm a current resident of Cookeville. I've lived here most of my life. As Billy said a second ago, silence is an invitation, something that I think that every person in this room has to contend with, all of us, is that whether or not we want to, you want to, a, a person wants to ally yourself with a Nazi, does not matter. Your intention is not, does not matter to a Nazi. They will ally themselves with you. They will see any kind of silence, any kind of room given as an invitation. I think, I'm sure everyone in this room has heard the old adage that the enemy of my enemy is my friend. If you speak to the same goals that a Nazi will speak to, whether you want to be friends with them or not, they will look at you and say, ah, yeah, you're my friend. We're buddies now. I, I'm also a faculty member at Tennessee Tech. I've had conversations with my students throughout the past couple of weeks. Many of them have voiced concerns to me that as students, they had, they enjoyed themselves in Cookeville. They, they feel welcome in this community. And now with these, and now with the presence of these extremist groups, they no longer feel safe. These are students who had previously planned to remain in this community after graduation and seek employment here that are now no longer considering doing so. I have spoken to more than one student who, remaining in Cookeville is not even a thought in their mind after last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else who'd like to say?
Good evening. My name's Elliot Klein. You heard from my father a few minutes ago. It's David, the one hundred percent DNA tested Jew. I think that makes me about fifty percent. I, I'm not up here to preach what I believe. I'm here to talk about what I've observed. And I don't have a, a massive speech planned. I'm kinda just a full of conscious on this notepad. So as my dad mentioned, I do go to tech and I actually just came from there. In fact, I left orchestra early to be here. Many of the like legendary composers that we play in that orchestra were displaced by Nazis nearly a hundred years ago. And the fact that I'm here speaking against Nazis and Nazi action nearly a hundred years later, it, it shows the, the true effects of education. And as a college town, education, it, it needs to be the, the priority. And where education fails, and it does, we need a nurturing community. And I think Cookeville is largely a nurturing community. But you cannot have a true nurturing community with members who actively support the massacring of other members. And flying a flag is actively supporting. Now, I, I'd like to bounce off the ideas of the silence is an invitation. It is, but it's not just an invitation. And I'll, I'll end my, my little tirade here with a quote. I'm sure every, every single one of these people in here have heard of this speaker, Albert Einstein. "If I were to remain silent, I'd be guilty of complicity." Thank you.
Go ahead. Uh, my name's Brandy. I'm a business owner and homeowner in Putnam County. I've been here for a long time and I just wanna, uh, talk from a different angle, um, since I don't think anyone's been to a drag show. Drag is art. It's performance art. It's not a lot different than seeing Dolly Parton live. She is in drag. She's said it many times. What it is, uh, it is someone that dresses up sometimes as a celebrity and performs their songs. Um, and tries to bring joy through those songs. Um, so drag is art. When we start censoring art, we're going down a really slippery slope. I own a gallery in Shop In Town. So it makes me a little nervous that if you are gonna start censoring performance art, uh, one, if you take away drag, you take away Shakespeare in the Park because a lot of men dress as women and Shakespeare, um, you know, and then it's like, what's next? Are you going to tell us like queer artists can't have gallery shows that, uh, speak about this queer experience? Are you going to tell musicians who are gay that they can't talk? Are you gonna tell Plenty on Spring that they can't have gay poets come and talk? So I just want you, as you're thinking about all these things, think about the slippery slope of censorship and where that can lead you. And definitely go to a drag show because they're not these crazy evil things that everyone thinks they are. They're incredibly entertaining. They're always full of so much love. Um, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Seo Denine and I've lived in Cookeville for twenty-five years. Some of you may know me on the board very well. For those of you don't, um, I hope to hit your heart. I stand with everybody in this room for peace. Um, I was appalled as well to see that, uh, we were, uh, been intimidated and given this fear by white supremacists. As a Native American, I wanna tell you that everybody here is walking on stolen land. So I'm giving land acknowledgement to the Uchi, the Otne, Yup, and the Shanee people who are here for you. And that spiritual awakening for people, once they realize that the land they're on is not theirs, that we share this place, we should share it. And, and mindset that this is going to be land we borrow from our children. And the concern has always been, it's for our kids. Well, a little history for you. That the United States government stole Native American children and put them in boarding camps and school boards, camps, excuse me. Not too far from the Holocaust, uh, actions that the Germans did to Jewish children. And it was appalling. And these were religious people, Christian people that did this. So I'm not afraid of LGBTQ people and really I'm not afraid of Christian people. But what I am afraid of is just people having fear and not talking to our brothers and sisters and understanding each other. Having dialogue. So as I leave you with this thought, um, it's a quote by Pastor Martin Lee Miller during World War Two. He said, "First they came for the socialists and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me and there was no one else left to speak for me." That's where we're at. And, um, you know, with however your feelings are for yourself, no one's forcing you to be gay or go to a drag show. I don't wanna see these as a concern as a parent. I don't wanna see these things taken out of our community for people to express themselves. My concern is the money that's being used and spent in the school system to still add like racist mascot. That hurts my children, but no one cares about that. Your silence would, uh, is, is not only deafening, it's just, it's hurtful. Be nice to have some support to change that. If you wanna ban something, ban some hate. And lastly, um, if you can find your heart to talk to me, we can discuss any meaningful dialogue to have some peaceful action for. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
My, my council members, my community, I'm so honored to have heard so many of my former students, uh, speaking tonight. I work at Tennessee Tech since two thousand and one, lived in Cookeville since two thousand and nine. It's Andrew Smith and I'm, uh, glad to be here tonight. Um, I don't have a prepared speech, so when you, if you need to hit the bell. Um, but I just wanna remind everybody that we have thirty-five thousand citizens by the record that I could look up. Fifteen thousand by the election commission records participated in your election in August of twenty twenty-two and you all have four-year terms. No one on this prestigious panel here earned more than three thousand votes because of the way the thing is set up. It's a plurality and there's an open field. It's nonpartisan. And so the person with the most votes had less than three thousand votes. Um, and so there's a lot of folks that ran that didn't get in, that were close, you know, close sixth, seventh place. Uh, and so I think that means that with some humility that, you know, with your job, with your charge and, 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 and y'all, none of you who know me are gonna be surprised. I didn't vote for everybody who's sitting up there, but I did vote for you, Mayor Wheaton. And I just wanna echo what my friends have said. I, I've gone on your Facebook page every single day since the last, last two weeks ago. I'm sorry I wasn't on there every day before that, looking for your statement. I'm still, I'm still waiting for it. And there's lots of other wonderful and beautiful things you're doing to support our community on that Facebook page. And I know that you guys are working hard for us in behind the scenes on much less hot button issues. One of your former colleagues who, um, missed, uh, getting a second term by just a handful of votes, received, uh, death threats to his family from members of this community for actions he took in this body to place a disclaimer at the boundary of the city cemetery, the city-owned cemetery, just to disavow as a city statement, Confederate monument in that, um, in that cemetery. And this, the last time I was here, it was packed like this around that topic. The reason I came tonight though, is because, um, a lot of my friends who are speaking up for the LGBTQIA community are secular. They don't participate in, in the religious affiliations that some of us have. And I just wanted to speak today as a baptized and born again follower of Jesus of Nazareth that I am fully and unequivocally and unapologetically LGBTQIA affirming. And in my training at Vanderbilt Seminary in Nashville, Tennessee, and in the denominations that I frequent, I have gotten more of the gospel from my LGBT Christian friends than from my straight Christian friends. And they have been harmed their whole lives. Some of them have suffered through failed conversion therapy and stayed gay and stayed Christian and wanted to come into churches where they weren't welcome. And in two thousand and fourteen, my former denomination ratified same gender marriage at the national level. And I meant to wear the scarf, but the one on the paper is, I'm wearing a rainbow scarf that was given to me to do that. And, and, and that says something about the love of Jesus. And that's not what I'm feeling from some of my Christian peers, uh, in this room and from the recording I watched from the last city council meeting. I just wanna say something about the kids and, and since it's not scripted, I'll, I'll then stop. But I have a pastor friend out in Nashville by the name of Stan Mitchell. You can look him up. His full-time ministry is counseling the parents of LGBTQ youth and L G B Q, LGBTQ youth to convince them not to kill themselves. He full-time works to prevent suicide, to show them that God loves them as God made them. God made them gay. And finally, if you look at Genesis, you look at the
I'll go ahead and ask you to wrap it up, okay?
All right. So, uh, God's pronouns are they and them and we and ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Lisa Loftus and I was born here. My family goes way back here. And my great-grandfather, going back to the fifteen hundreds, was Archbishop of Dublin. And he was one of the three that started the Reformation way back in the fifteen hundreds with Martin Luther and the other I. So I know all about religion, which is amazing. And honestly, my grandmother Violet Hicks, the neat, my, my cousins are the ones that are doing, doing the drag show for the folks there. And so, you know, our family's very religious, probably one of the most religious families in this area. And we date back to, I'm sorry, Seota, the terrible genocide that happened. And I would have to say that Jesus was friends with prostitutes. He turned wine into water. He hung out with prostitute a well. And Jesus befriended everyone. He didn't alienate people and talk trash on them and tell them what they were doing wrong in this. He lived his life and attracted other people to it. And that's what it's like to be a real Christian. So if you want to preach your thing, just live your life. Don't push your views on other people. And, um, on that note, uh, I think we should take the brown promise land signs down because that's religious ideation. And not everybody believes in that, especially me, um, you know, anymore. And I also wanna say that, you know, everybody can change. I'm the perfect example of that. If anybody knows me, I was one of the OG Karens in this town. They've seen it in headline news for some terrible things I said. So you, if I can change, anybody can change. My family loves everybody with U C pride. It's a paying, they're paying, okay? And the church doesn't pay any taxes. I'm also a CPA. They pay no taxes. What are they paying y'all? What do you get from them? Okay? The people that were at the brewery are paying nine point seven five percent sales tax. They're buying other stuff here. They're buying food, alcohol, liquor tax, fifteen percent. Okay, so as Taylor Swift says, our pennies make your crown. Think about that.
Thank you. What's, uh, sorry, what's your name again?
I'm Lisa Stanberry.
Okay.
I go to the high school and I would like to put out there that I was sexually assaulted by a family friend of mine that was, um, just came home from boot camp and he's now a Realtor. So, you know, might see him out there. Um, everyone keeps saying ban drag shows, um, children are being groomed and everything. Who's been, who is being groomed at the Hicks family? Like, who is being groomed there? And yes, I would agree that it should be over eighteen because children, not because children are being groomed, but because alcohol could be served. And you don't want alcohol to get to minors because then that could mess up some stuff in the brain, as was said before. Also, the amount of homophobia in the high school, that, um, that's ridiculous. There's so much homophobia. Like, I'll go in the bathroom and there's writing on the walls that say, kill all gays. I'm sorry, but why, why am I being told that I should kill myself because I don't meet society's standards? That, to me, I don't feel that is acceptable. And I would ask that, please, help me change this because I wanna go into school not feeling like a target. I feel like a target. Every time I walk into that park, like anytime I go in that parking lot, I feel like a target. There's everyone with their stay straight, everything, be your, like, don't be gay, everything, running around with Trump flags. I'm not, not political. Don't try to get into that. But when I walk into that, the school and everything, I feel like I'm a target because I am just not meeting all these society standards. That, to me, just isn't acceptable. I'm not religious either, which I can see that other people very much are and that they think that being gay is against the religion. Okay, I get that. Not everyone is Christian though. Not everyone. There's Jewish people. There's everyone else. Not everyone is Christian. So don't push your beliefs on to other people, please. And then I, like, I feel like there's other kids in my school and I, I go to class with some of them and they just, they feel like targets. And I'm currently reading a story and writing a, uh, essay about, um, how society doesn't accept gay people. It's called Bliss. Um, but that's for my, uh, college English. And then, um, white ribbon, I'm a part of that too. So it's a basically don't like, like non-supporting, um, basically don't do domestic violence and everything, which this honestly, like the whole, don't be gay and everything and then like hate flags and kill all gays in the bathroom, that doesn't, like, that doesn't add up to it. And we have the day for white ribbon day and I feel like that should be more represented and everything. And then it's everything, it's like we're still stuck in the eighties or something. We, we can't move forward because like this, why am I having to come up here and speak about how I, how I'm being told to kill myself because I'm quote unquote gay or whatever everyone else says? So I would please just ask you, please, I don't wanna walk into my school and feel like a target. Thank you.
Thank you for stopping.
Hello, my name's Montana Chambers. I'm a resident of Cookeville, city of Cookeville. I guess I don't need to tell y'all that I'm pretty disappointed, just like some of these people are of your silence against the Nazis. But also disappointed that some of y'all look bored up here listening to our concerns. Your citizens are concerned. They're fearful. Are you doing your job to help them feel safe in their
Your citizens are concerned. They're fearful. Are you doing your job to help them feel safe in their city? I would also like to point out that when people talk about children going to these drag shows and their concerns about them. And how it. Might hurt their development. I'd like to point out that I grew up with a bunch of heterosexual rhetoric and I still turned out gay. Um, I would also like to say that people who are saying that they didn't like the Nazis, that they're not a part of that. I remember growing up being told that birds of a feather flock together. I'm glad I fly with a really loving flock. Thank you, guys. I would also like to say a quote that I've heard before from a Jew that inscribed on a wall during the Holocaust was that your God will have to answer to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Moon, and I've lived in Cookeville for about ten years. I went to school at Tech and, um. I'm a single mom and, uh, the Sunday evening that the white supremacists came and did what they did. Um, my daughter called me and she had seen it, I guess, on social media. And I attend, I go, because it's, Brandy's right, it's a performance. It's super fun. It's loving. It's a kind group of people. It's, I, I feel safe. It's a safe place for me to go and enjoy myself. My daughter called upset. My son texted me from his dad's house, Mom, were you there today? I didn't, I didn't have the opportunity to go that Sunday. I had something else going on. So I was like, no, I wasn't. So my son, yesterday, we were talking about it again, and he, he's fifteen. My daughter's nineteen at UTK. And my son is fifteen and he started crying. He was like, Mom, I don't, I don't want you to go to these things anymore because I'm worried about you. So, you know, he's like, they, somebody could just pull out a gun, you know? We had a beautiful silent protest this past Sunday where we brought love back on to the streets of Cookeville. What do you want your legacy to be? Love? Honoring love and compassion and, and surrounding our, our children, all of us? With protection? Or do you want your legacy to be fear? And, and allow people to instill fear into the hearts of our children? I mean, seriously. And one more thing, don't tell me what I. Can or cannot do with my children, as long as that I'm not obviously harming them with drugs or something like that. But if I want to take my kids to a drag show, I'm gonna. And I'm gonna tell you something, this community, the LGBTQ community, has supported and loved me through some very difficult times, more than the church did. And some of my, even my family. They are beautiful, kind individuals. So please, let your legacy be about protecting love and all humans.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Ballard. I live and work in Cookeville. Uh, where I work, a window was shot out a week before all of this happened. At where I work, we sponsor Pride. And we have no way to prove who was connected in doing it. But one plus one equals two. In response to this, I decided to buy a firearm to keep it at my place of, of business. When I went to pick the firearm up from the licensed dealer who's several blocks from here, the background check was taking a while. So he went ahead and called to speed it up. When he called, he read his, what I guess would be a pin. Off, and he read it twice and he spelled it out. And he spelled A D O L F H with a series of numbers afterwards. And he said this twice. I'm positive of what I heard. So everybody who thinks that this is just something that got bust in, you're wrong. This is, this is here. This hate is here. And people's, people's lives are in danger. And that's all I yield.
Thank you.
My name's Jeff Burble. I'm a, a native of Cookeville, Tennessee, in Putnam County. I've lived here my whole life. Born at Cookeville Regional Hospital. Some of you guys that sit on the panel up here, I played baseball with you. Uh, I've, uh, we, we've done all numerous activities growing up as kids. I love Cookeville. I was part as a child when the hospital kinda came up and changed hands. All the citizens gathered around the hospital holding hands. We wretched all the way around the whole Cookeville community. And the citizens poured out for that love. It was absolutely amazing. My childhood memories are here in Cookeville. I raised my family here. I am a business owner here. There's no place better to, to be. I saw the outpouring response of people when the tornado struck. It was amazing what people did. I was at this event in front of Raff Stone nuts. I went with two of my friends to kinda sit back and observe. It was absolutely disgusting. It was the most disgusting thing I have ever witnessed in Cookeville. Except when a little boy, his mother and father had reported him missing and had killed him in their safe. Our town is progressing. And this hate, somebody asked me a long time ago. Said, what have we forgot to do? I'm not a wise person. I go to a lot of these types of meetings. And everybody says they're there to stand up and preach love, but all they do when they get up to a podium is preach diversity and division. These folks that were there, me and two other guys, walked both sides of the street. They were not here. They were not from here. A nineteen-year-old boy and a twenty-two-year-old boy got out of their car. And opened up that flag. They stood there and we requested them to please take that down. That all it was, was a controversy symbol that spoke hate in our community. They were from Chattanooga. They folded the flag up, they put it in their car, but the damage was done, done. I saw the vulgarity from the right-hand side of the street and from the left-hand side of the street. The F-word flew back and forth from both parties. It was disgusting. I do beg this city council, this elected board, do something to keep this hatred out of our town, these people out of our town. Don't sacrifice our hometown values for progression.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss White.
Uh, yes, um, so I'm Adam Heckman. I was also born right here in Cookeville, Tennessee, Cookeville Regional. Um, I was, uh, went to church my whole life. My dad was a pastor here. I'm. Um, uh, I've known a lot of wonderful Christians, uh, throughout my, you know, throughout my years here. But. I've never experienced, um, well, no, there's some, there are some loving and accepting Christians. I don't want to say that I've never experienced like love and acceptance. Um, uh, with Christians, but I have never experienced anything but love and acceptance with any. Uh, with any interaction that I've had in, uh, going to drag shows with Pride, with any of my LGBTQIA friends. The, the way that we, the way that we treat others. Um, is how we're to be judged. And I have known the, the, I have known the person that I grew up hearing about in Christ. From more LGBTQIA people than I ever have in the church. Um, and I have known a hell of a lot of hateful people in the church. Anyway. I've heard stuff today about, you know, the effects that LG, the, the effects that drag shows have on children and the effects that's. My goodness, there's, there's so much, there's so much science on this at this point, like, we're not. Going to drag shows doesn't make you gay. Um, being accepted by people is the best predictor of mental health. Uh, is the best predict, is the best protective factor against suicide. Um, uh, we know this. We do research on suicide mental health all the time. Um, this isn't, this isn't really, this is an upward debate. It's accepted in the scientific community at this point. That, uh, when we have, having, uh, LGBTQ clubs in high schools makes it, makes. Straight male students less likely to commit suicide. Um, not even being members of these clubs, it just, it changes the whole culture of the community, just being accepting. I don't know, I didn't have, I didn't have, uh, didn't have prepared remarks. I kind of wish that I had because I know there are three or four things I don't want to say here, but. Anyway, I guess that's about all that I have. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, we'll, we'll take these last two standing comments and then we'll go ahead and retire the meeting. We're here to talk to y'all if you want to afterwards, but we'll go ahead and take these last two that are standing, okay?
Good evening. My name is Wesley Atkins, and I'm a lifelong resident of Pigville in Pettam County. And currently serve as the general manager and operating partner for Panera Bread here in Cookeville. Uh, additionally, I'm a licensed Realtor, a licensed auctioneer, and I serve as an ambassador for the Cookeville County Chamber of Commerce for the past several years. In between those roles, I also volunteer with local nonprofits like Upper Cumberland Habitat for Humanity, Heart of the Cumberland, Cookeville J C's. And also serve as a Tennessee Achieves mentor for the past several years. I share all these things with you to paint the picture of the type of person that I am, uh, and try to be, but also to tell you that I live my life as an openly gay man. Who has been in a committed relationship for the past nine years. Uh, obviously, in recent weeks, the LGBT community has been under attack from individuals that also live in our community. And their intention, passion and disregard for these people whom I consider my friends and allies has been without merit. I stand before you tonight, not to shame or make anyone feel bad, but simply to provide a different point of view. Uh, and I'd like to share a couple of statistics with you, a quote from the Trevor Project. In the U S, suicide is the second leading cause of death among young people aged ten to twenty-four, with LGBTQ youth being significantly higher risk. LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Approximately forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth seriously consider suicide in the last year, with at least one youth attempting suicide every forty-five seconds. Over half of those individuals that attempted identify as trans or non-binary. Thirty-six percent of LGBT youth reported that they had been physically threatened or harmed. And those who were bullied attempted suicide at nearly triple the rate of those who did not in the past year. Seventy-three percent of LGBT youth reported that they experienced some sort of discrimination based on their sexual orientation or gender identity at least once in their lifetime. And those who did attempted suicide at more than twice the rate of those who did not. Many LGBTQ youth lack access to affirming spaces, with only half of them reporting that their school is affirming. Less than twenty-five percent saying that their home is affirming. And fewer than one in three transgender and non-binary youths found that their home to be affirming. Research consistently proves that LGBT youth report lower rates of attempted suicide when they have LGBT accused, LGBTQ affirming spaces. As a firm believer in the good in people, I would encourage you to consider this, assuming that we are all concerned with the safety and well-being of all children. Having at least one accepting adult in their life can reduce the risk of a suicide attempt among LGBTQ youth by forty percent. Youth who felt high social support from their family reported attempting suicide at less than half the rate of those who felt lower moderate support. Youth who live in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ people reported significantly lower rates of attempting suicide than those who did not.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Steve Robinson, and thirty-two years ago, my wife and I chose Cookeville. As a place to raise our young family, one of whom is here tonight as a member of the LGBTQ community. Over the years, in my position at Tennessee Tech, I have been responsible or partly responsible for bringing people from all over the world to work at our uni- wonderful university. And when they come and they interview with us and ask us what kind of community is it? Is it a good place to raise a family? I've been able to answer, yes, most definitely. It's a very welcoming and warm community. With what's been happening over the last few months and with us hiring some new people right now, I don't think I can say that anymore. And I just want you to know that because of the silence of the leadership of our community, we cannot say that anymore, that this is a warm and welcoming place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Know that we're available to talk. We're available to have discussion. That's what we're here for. But thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We appreciate you speaking. Meeting is adjourned.